Okay, hello, welcome to the Village of Wapinjers Falls Board Meeting for the Mayors and Trustees for August 26, 2020. At this time, I'd like you to please join us with the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God. Thank you. So tonight, at the beginning of the agenda, we have the projects that we've been working on and we have... But first, I'd like John to do the roll call.
Mayor Alexander.
Here.
Trustee Marka John, absent. Trustee Davis.
Here.
Trustee Kamornik, absent. Trustee Huber. Trustee Lammers.
Here.
Trustee Potnessa.
Here.
Village Attorney Wallace.
He's here. Greg, you're on mute.
Sorry, sorry, everybody.
Okay. Okay, so we're gonna get started tonight with the... A report of the projects that we've been working on and so on this past Saturday, we had a public input meeting and we discussed seven new projects as along with other items that were put out there for public input. And I'd like to ask Corey, who did a great job putting this all together, to give us the results of the public input from the Saturday meeting as well as the survey that we had put out. And hold on one second, Corey, because I'll bring up... So Corey, go ahead.
All right, sorry, I was losing, yes, I just plugged in to Ethernet. Okay. All right, so I'm just gonna read results from... We just sort of combined them, so this is what people wrote on the boards as well as the survey. And some people answered indifferent to things, but I'm just gonna give an overall... This is what people liked and the amount that didn't like, and there is a difference in the middle for indifferent. I'm not just, I think just rattling numbers off would be pointless, so. So to start is with the boathouse. On the survey, there was a 76% like for this and a 6% dislike. And at the meeting, there was 100% like. So most people enjoyed what we recommended for it, which was an arthouse and event space as well as a boathouse. Of course, people have brought up that cleaning up the weeds in Wapinjer Creek would enhance this greatly, which is obviously on the list of things to do. But for the boathouse as a whole, projects or what we want to do with it, a lot of people really enjoyed that, so. Some of the top comments were literally "love it for a boathouse and event space for residents", "arts and event space and great idea, but clean up the creek, too many weeds", which, you know, we expect. Moving on to the cobbler shop. This was 84% like and 5% dislike. And this one, we gave a lot more options on what to do with this property or a lot more suggestions, I could say, of what we want to do with this property. So I took a little tally, 64% said they really liked the radio station idea, 14% wanted an information booth, 14% liked it as a rotating art gallery, and 8% suggested an ice cream shop. Some of it is, yeah, local talent, use singles, any age, love radio. Radio stations or rotating art exhibit would be great. And then I did throw in a few of those, "oh, we would love an ice cream shop on west, on the west side of the village", but this one got, yeah, a lot of like. And the radio station seemed to be the top, the top thing. Mary Ross Park. We had 83% like and 5% dislike. Outdoor dining looks great to add more plants, someone suggested, which is a good point. Excellent idea, some people said maybe we should just use it as an art or sculptor place. But there was, there was an overall consensus that they really liked doing something with this little plot of, plot of land. There was some pushback, some people said, "oh, there are more important things to do", which is, you know, fair, but this is just one of the projects we have in our wheelhouse. So for the most part, it was generally liked. And next, we have Fallsview Park. This was 82% like and only 2% dislike. This one, again, there was multiple suggestions for what to do with it or not only what to do with it, but as you see, there were multiple options. And most people really liked the brick and stone option reading, I think the brick... I'm sorry, the stone, the stone option got 55%, the brick got 33, and the wood got 12. Everyone really liked the idea of putting this building as well as a large overlook. And most of the ideas for the building that people agreed with was a restaurant or little hotel. Next, we have Mill Street Parking Lot. We had a 72% like for this and a 14% dislike with a decent indifferent percentage as well. I think everyone agrees that there needs to be more parking. One of the quotes is "great idea, village desperately needs more parking". One of the backlashes or hesitation someone had was if we put apartments on the third floor, which was a suggestion between that or office spaces, then a lot of the new parking spots would probably be taken up for those properties and so they wouldn't actually add more public parking to the area, which is a fair suggestion. But a couple of the quotes for that one was just that. But again, parking has always been a problem. Parking, additional parking would be great. I don't need to be convinced of the tides of building there. So again, everyone's on board with doing something with this property. Most people liked the office space idea more than putting apartments up there. And some even suggested if this happens, making all of it metered parking. So it would be public parking, but it would also be, it wouldn't be free, it'd be a way for the village to make money, so. That wasn't too big of a suggestion, but it is something that came up even there. Moving on, we have Goring Hall. We had a 86% like for this project and a 5% dislike. Some people still wanted to see a building come up there again. A lot of people said, "oh, but what about, you know, restoring Goring Hall", which is obviously an extremely costly manor. But a majority of people really liked the outdoor restaurant idea. Of course, here is shown is just a concept of it. Some people suggested, "well, what about something a little more enclosed", something that could be used in colder months as well, because this is definitely a very summery type of structure at the moment. It would probably be very cold, so a lot of people enjoy the idea of having this as an outdoor eating space so long as there's a way to use it as the, as the months get colder. Some of the quotes I'll just say would be, "would like more enclosed area for cold weather dining", "I love it", or "rebuilding Goring Hall would be ideal", but I understand putting a pavilion there being beneficial for the village, so. We also have the United Methodist Church, which is where this whole meeting took place. There was a 76% like and a 5% dislike for this one. There was also a lot of suggestions here, there's various rooms. We even had different comment blocks in each room to see what people wanted. The top two was a theater space. I think people really liked the theater space idea, especially in the church part. And a lot of people really, really, there was a lot of talk about keeping it as a daycare or teen center, something that they think would benefit the youth of the community. But there were others who liked the senior idea and the restaurant idea was floated around, but I don't think it got as much traction as others. Another problem, though, in some of the quotes as well, people brought up where the church has a lot of traffic. Changes must accommodate more traffic and parking. Performance and learning space is awesome as long as parking is addressed. And then there was a few, you know, "it needs a new playground, brewery or restaurant or theater in front", so the things we are hoping people wanted, the things we suggested, a lot of them are picking up. And that was all that was in the survey, but we did have a few more projects posted at the actual public meeting. We had St. Mary's, which people said they would like to have, you know, whether it be a public library area or a great place for town and facility senior center, which is also something we've thrown around. And Zion and Mazir, we're trying to get parking at Zion and Mazir, or I'm sorry, at Zion, shared public parking. And we also suggested these little kiosk shops at Mazir Park. And most people who commented on it said they actually really liked this idea as long as it's seasonal. I think almost every single one said seasonal, have it around Christmas time. You know, that one even says holiday market. Have it around Christmas time, but in the summer, they want the park to remain a park that they can use. And the last one is Route 9, which more traffic calming was a big thing, more friendly pedestrian and cycling sections of it, more research on safer crosswalks. And we've discussed new bus shelters, which they said, "yes" to new bus shelters so long as the POW memorial is incorporated within to it. And so that's a, for the ones we talked about there, that's, that's the largest overview we have of... Most people liked the projects and they gave a lot of really good suggestions. And we're just gonna keep compiling, we still have the survey out, so we're gonna keep compiling answers and, and see what people feel.
So we also had something on the Bleachery, right? Did you get comments?
Oh, yes, we did, we had... Yeah, we had a Bleachery slide as well. People really liked the distillery idea. History on the site could be more accessible for walking. I think they're talking about the Walkman's path or the worker's path. And an arthouse or condos. And, you know, we do know with what is in that area, where, you know, we're doing a cleanup of the soil and stuff there that deters it from being certain things, but I, I think a lot of people really liked the distillery idea. Just making something down there that's worth going down there. And we actually had one more too, which was Bain Park, which also wasn't in the survey. And people really just, they liked the playground idea. I mean, we've talked about Bain Park a lot, we've had its own public meeting for Bain Park. That was the only other one, they talked about addressing parking, because we know a lot of residents use that area right now for parking. And making sure that upkeeping all of these parks doesn't heavily increase, you know, obviously maintenance to it, and that's gonna cost more money, but... So those are the, those are all of the projects that we talked about at the meeting, it went really well. I don't recall if Matt said it, but, I mean, we were expecting around 30, 35 people and I believe our attendance came to 62, so it was a really good meeting. I saw some of you there and, yeah, it was, it was a good day altogether.
And the, the number of survey respondents was over 100?
Yeah, yeah.
So we got about 100, I think it was 118 responses to the survey online. So we collected a lot of good information and, and Corey did a great job putting this together. So we want to thank him for all this good effort that he did.
Thanks, Corey.
Thank you, Corey, great job.
Thank you.
Okay, so Corey's gonna head off. I did want to also say that we had done a presentation before and we had been talking about West Main Street, if you remember, and the, the video that guy put out about it. You know, there's been some talk around the Gold Leaf buildings, so the buildings on the west side of West Main Street between Groundhog and the... Between Groundhog and the County Players on the same side as both of those buildings. There's a group of buildings, one of, at least one of them is condemned and another one has a parking spot, parking for 10 or 12 cars. And then there's a cement block building and there had been talk about putting a project there that would take up all three, three parcels and work to get something going there. So that, there were two different developers and they, one of those properties looks like it's going to be closed on soon. I did want to say that there is a unique opportunity for the board to consider purchasing the middle lot and adding property for, just for parking for West Main Street. If you remember, at the end of December, January, we did a parking study and the parking study came back that parking was needed throughout the business district, but it was thoroughly needed on the West Main Street side of the business district. I think that if the village wants to continue revitalizing that part of the village that it should seriously consider whether or not it might want to purchase the parking lot area there. So I think that that's something that should be discussed and explored. So there would be an opportunity to do that. There'd also be an opportunity to purchase just the parking subdivide off the building that goes with it and sell it to somebody with the, with a deed restriction that says that it could only be used for commercial so that it wouldn't add additional, an additional burden to the community for the amount of apartments that it might add that would take up additional parkings. Or it could be kept by the village and rented to a business that would go well with the mix for the businesses in our business district, like an art gallery or something specific like that. And then the money could be put back into keeping up with the parking lots that we have around the area. So those are just some ideas for us to consider. And I'll leave you with that for now and we could discuss that at another time.
Mayor, I just want to interject that I think it's advisable to just re... Just emphasize that these are general concepts. There are no specific plans for any one property being acquired, okay? And, and that that is not... To understand that distinction.
Yeah, so while everything that you saw in all of these concepts is... These are planning ideas, they're general, they're things that we just want to collect information from the public about whether or not they're interested in seeing this, whether there's any public controversy surrounding the use of any of the buildings in this manner and just guiding the, the board and the village and future projects to consider. So are there any questions or comments about the entire presentation? Okay, so I think we, Corey really got a lot of participation out there and we also were very thankful to have a great video, which, which got more than, I think a week ago, it was up to 5,000 views and I think it's even gotten many, many more views since then. So we really want to thank the village resident who put the time and effort into doing that pro bono for us, because it was a very professionally done video that we really appreciate. Okay, so that being said, I think we're gonna go on and I will share the screen again and ask John Zarowski to speak to us about the... Hold on, I'm sorry, I gotta switch the screen. Okay, John, our engineer will lead us through the projects that are ongoing. Can everybody see a document titled "Projects for Discussion"?
Yeah.
Okay.
Franny Reese Park, moving very nicely. They're looking at some paving next week and then strapping around the case. So it appears that they're on target to... Not on time. For the tap project. Contact has been out. Great progress up until last week. And they bumped into a schedule yesterday. Tried to be marked out and very shallow, they were very careful doing it. However, because of that, Central Hudson Committee decided that they wanted to 460 linear feet of 300 gas main, put her down and deeper, much deeper than they are. Because now they're basically taking over East Main Street. They're targeting the 24th of August for being done, but again, they're taking all the schedule and contact can only do so much, because Central Hudson is very much in the right. Again, even with that, we're hoping that if Central Hudson gets out of there that they will still be able to finish by the October 17, our contract date. Next project, other project. So Contract 5, that is about the, the interconnect, the water, the town and the village. We're moving ahead on getting the drawings to DOT, but I think we need to talk about including the, the piece of sewer main that was, that wasn't completed as part of Contract 4 because of the, the tanks that were discovered and the contaminated soil that basically ended that part of the project. So we never finished the section of sewer that went from Arrow out of West to Duchess Plaza. And I've had several of you people who'd like to include this as part of Contract 5. Funding for Contract 5 is purely drinking water, it has nothing to do with water. So this, if it's going to be funded, this would be a village-funded project until we find other funding. Right, out of village. We have to see funding for this project right now, I want to point that out. And the easement, although it's nearly done, we need the easement document signed. So the easement for the sewer mains in place. Also bed in place. So we have to get the authorization to get it signed. And then if you want me to include that in the drawings as part of this project or Contract 5, and we need to do that before we go to the Department of Health. That brings the DOT back into the picture, because now we're in DOT right away. And I'm sure the DPW probably wants to comment on it as well, so. These are all pieces that need to be in place before, allow for getting our, like, before submit for approvals. Continue with this or move to the next project? You can come back to this unless there's some questions. The water filter plant, we're putting together the USDA funding. Again, it's nearly ready to go in, just the last two pieces, I believe. Matt, did you guys do the notice of intent? Or just?
I have to check with Corey, hold on.
We had talked about it. Need the notice of intent done so that we can include that and then get this submitted. Anyway, there is a rolling deadline, so there's, we're not up against a solid date on this, but... I'd like to get this in so we can see if we can get some funding for the water filter plant and the water.
So I'm gonna, I'll have to get that answer for you.
All right, we can move on. Bain Park Master Plan, that did come up in your, your presentation, Matt. But we are moving ahead with the master plan to Bain Park. The draft survey map is done. We're planning on a kickoff meeting in September. We'll be putting together the master plan, the playground area, and then also preparing the secret documentation for it. Grease trap is moving forward. We put together some things, like apparently there's a meeting on Friday in the courtroom with the committee has been selected. So Nancy and Kristen will be there to present the grease trap language for you. We are revising the code. The Brownfield Grant Program, we have put together an application for moving forward on the, getting the EPA, and not the application, but a work plan and the health and safety plan to the EPA for doing a Phase II with the Bleachery. They're scaling it back a little bit, I just got word from the EPA that they're scaling it back a little bit. I'll have more when I flush that out with them for next month's meeting. But we are moving forward on the Brownfield for the Bleacherys. The infrastructure study, nothing more has happened on that since the last time. And my understanding that there was a meeting, which for Pajuti Terrace, I've been invited to, but Nancy to lead on that, so she attended the meeting. The water extension and the watering sewer extension out of Pajuti Terrace. Because we need to figure out if we're gonna take that out to bid or if it's gonna be done, the water and sewer are gonna be done right now.
So on that one, we've been meeting with the county and we'll be giving you, giving more detail as to how that's gonna go forward. It's, however, that being said, this grant is not actually in contract yet, so this is the last grant that we got and it depends on the federal process completing as of a certain date and they haven't completed their process yet. So we'll be given instructions as to how that's gonna proceed.
If you want to step back to the boathouse. It's on my list, but the boathouse. Like to take that out to bid going forward. We have prepared preliminary bid documents, we have to put the specs and the front end together for that. So I would just want to know if you'd want to go ahead with the boathouse. We had a cross estimate for that. With a 20% contingency, we added about 107,000 dollars for going ahead with the patio behind it, the sidewalks, same parking, and tying into the existing path that was put in. And that would be with the landscaping serving. Based on the, what the discussion. There we go.
Yeah, so this is just a conceptual picture. So is, we asked if the board remembers, right, not, doesn't seem so long ago, but yet it seems like a really long time ago. So in January and February of 2020, we asked our engineers to prepare documents so that we could be ready to go out to bid. That does not mean that they, so they prepared the plans and specifications and got us the estimate. And... And um they need to, what they're asking is for us to put this out uh so that they could prepare it. Prepare the bid documents themselves with all of the contract uh requests. Um the financing on this, we still have uh. Eleven thousand dollars from the DEC left in a grant to be spent on the outside and fifty thousand dollars from a county grant to be spent on the outside. And we've also received back uh sixty eight thousand dollars from, from the repayment of the CDBG. Uh so we should be able to use uh that funding and have more than enough to complete uh it. A, a one hundred and seven thousand dollar job. I'd like to ask the board if we could move as quickly as possible because we do have two. Uh contracting entities that are located in the village right now, working on a project and we might uh. We might do well uh because they're already set up here in the village and this is, could be a nice project for them to end their season with. And we might get favorable pricing. Um but you know, we, we did that last time and we actually got favorable pricing from a different uh contractor. It was. Wasn't the same as these two contractors that are here. So um I'd like to ask if we could uh get approval to. Put this out to bid and to uh get the results back as soon as possible so we can uh see what the prices are and see if we can move forward. Were there any question? Go ahead.
Uh how much, how much did the uh, we, we pay for to go out to bid? Maybe I draw plans or we just use the plans that we have?
We've actually modified the plans um based on what we did um on meetings back in January. To. We're putting a patio behind and. Can I share a screen here?
You could now.
But it's really gonna cost us nothing just to go out and find the page art, correct?
So if you can see my screen, I've got, if you can see my mouse moving around. So we've got a patio in the back with a stairwell.
Yeah.
Shaving in the sidewalk, which ties into the. Walkway and then the landscaping, the curving. Um that's what came up with, with 20% contingent, it came up with a hundred and seven, so. So this is where we're, we've got, you know, like the specs are pretty much ready to go. And then we just need um the dates and things for the contract, the front end of the contract. To put this out to bid fairly quickly if you wanna go over it. But we already have, like based on these meetings, for handicap access. Building.
We're looking, we're looking to finish this year.
This would get, put us in a position where we could finish this year. There are two other contractors in our way to finishing this year, so it. Just requires that they finish their projects. In time for this contractor to come out and finish this project, but we're meeting with them Friday. And we uh have also been, we also went down to the boathouse today uh to look and see how the progress is going and we. Don't have any information that leads us to believe they won't finish on time for this to happen this year.
Okay. And I, and. Look, we're looking at a hundred and seven thousand, we're looking to spend on this project for the free outside, correct?
Right, it's all outside work.
Any other questions?
So we're talking about the patio on the back and all the landscaping.
Yeah, patio landscaping, the parking lot and the sidewalks.
Okay, so I just have one other question. Um I know you guys hired Mark Lanto at the last meeting, so what is he working on down at that?
He's working on the sheet rock. On the inside, the um bathrooms, the uh kitchen area, the uh. Bidding of the um. Toilets, uh so he'll, he'll fit out the, all the bathrooms and um. And then he'll work in the back room. He'll move the stuff from the back room over to the uh. American Legion and uh get that boat rental area set up, cleaned out and set up and uh. Ready to be moved into.
Well, I have a question uh regarding the, the exterior work. Is that pretty much, is it pretty much adhering to? Like the uh, you know, I'm not an expert in reading blueprints or anything like that, but the overall design, does it conform to pretty much what? You know, we displayed like the art rendering that we saw?
Um I'll put it up again so you can see it, but it is uh. Yeah, it's just not gonna have, so it's gonna have uh the patio where you see on the back of the building.
Ah.
Is gonna be pulled in closer to the back of the building so that if you're uh, so that. That space can be enjoyed by um. People can just walk right out onto the patio. So we also saved a lot of money by taking out the curves and making a squared off patio. And uh if you see all the uh foliage that's put in the pink there, it would. Give us a clearer way to access the garage, which is the boathouse. So the boathouse is the little perpendicular building that. That sticks out on the northern side of the building toward the creek. And this would give us better, more uh. It, it would be better access to that part of the building. Uh it won't be as pretty, but it will save us money. For that portion. Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
It's pretty close to the concept.
Yeah, that's, that's good.
Uh this, this paved area that you see closer to the creek with the pink vegetation shown would uh. It would be more grass here, but we would use natural, uh nat, the natural setting instead of um. Uh needing all of that hardscape at that location too.
Okay.
Okay, any other questions? If there's no other questions, can we get a motion to uh have Casey put this work out to bid?
I'll make the motion.
A motion from trustee Lammers. Can I get a second?
I'll make it.
Second by trustee Huber. All those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
And any opposed? Are there any opposed? Okay, I did not hear that any were opposed. So if you're on mute and you opposed it, please unmute yourself and re-oppose it. But I'm, I'm gonna say that we're recording this as all in fa, all who are present here in favor of uh moving ahead with putting this out to bid. Okay, uh. I'm sure the. Okay, so uh the next item on the agenda.
Oh, hold on, I got a question.
Go ahead.
Um I actually have a question and kind of a concern for Franny Reese Park. I took a ride up there today and kind of walked down.
Can we, Mary, can we finish the agenda and then uh go back to that?
Alright.
No, no, actually, that's good. This is a good time. I'm sorry, because we're doing the uh projects now. Good, go ahead.
So I walked down there. Is there going to be a wall put up alongside the landing that's on the bottom or some kind of fencing?
Yes.
That sits along?
So we're, we uh went down there and we decided that it, the best way to put something there would be a vegetated border. So there would be a, something telling you that that was the edge.
Okay, and then secondly, um are we gonna somehow, some way make that park handicap accessible? Because there's no way anybody that needs to go down there with either a wheelchair or a walker is gonna make it down there. Um. The staircase, the staircase is not user friendly to anyone who's gotta bring down a child in a carriage. And then God forbid if there's an emergency and then ENT or paramedic needs to go down there trying to get stretcher down and back up is not gonna be. That easy.
Yeah, so with the stretcher comment is, it is what it is that you saw. Uh that's the way it's gonna be, but there will be railing added on the um turns in the stairway. And the ADA access, we have a second phase that we, we'd like to do, uh which we think instead of bringing out a. Three hundred thousand dollar bridge to cross over to the top of the um amphitheater, we think that it's possible that we could uh. Look at getting ADA access so that ADA um. That there will be a, a way to view uh the amphitheater from the top. And so we're working on that. Uh but that's, that's not uh the, the way that the site. Uh was, the, the way that the site is did not lend itself to being um to, to us making the grade with the ramp. To get up to the uh paved area where the parking lot was. Are there any other comments about any of the projects?
I'm gonna, I'll take leave then.
Pardon me?
Guess I'll take off then. Don't need me anymore tonight.
Oh yes, no, I, I think we're good. Does uh anybody need to ask John any questions before he goes? Okay, so um I think. Next on the agenda, uh I'm gonna put the, I'm gonna share the agenda. Okay, our next item on the agenda is, um thank you, John. Uh we have. A court audit and uh Jessica, would you like to talk to us about the court audit?
Sorry, no, I'm okay.
So uh. Okay. I don't think we have any um. So do you have the results of the court audit, Jessica?
Oh yeah, everything went really well, so. Um they're really organized and they keep track of everything, so it's ready to go.
Okay, very good. So there were no exceptions?
Nope.
Okay, so uh can we get a motion to approve the court audit performed by our treasurer?
I will.
I think I'm gonna say a motion was made by trustee Panassa. Second?
I'll second it.
Seconded by trustee Lammers. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, uh next item on the agenda, we have the discussion of uh property that uh we have. Had several violations for and uh. So. I asked the attorney to take it over from here and I'm gonna start trying to share the documents that you need as you need them. Right when you tell me which one, the first. First document that you need. The notice of violation?
Yep, okay, so um. Alright, as you'll recall, this particular property has been, uh just because there's a lot of um. Our angry residents have come before this floor, have complained about it. There have been a lot of um prior um enforcement actions under the old property maintenance code. Uh particularly of which um I have personally prosecuted a couple of years ago in front of Judge Chasner, the local uh court. And um as a result of that, um. We had a law change um a couple of months ago on the property maintenance code. And um this property maintenance code um was, you know, passed for reasons just like this. Um. I, 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 before I get into the allegations um from the zoning enforcement officer, for the code enforcement officer. Um I just wanted to, if anybody has any questions about um the actual applicable law, it's chapter 114. Under the property maintenance code, um that is uh. It previously passed a couple of months ago. Um you know, we went over a number of drafts, so um. Basically enlarged the um, the, the umbrella of offenses that could be charged under that law. And we made it so that if it, the um orders to remedy were ignored, um then the uh. The village building department could actually bring uh a hearing, a request a hearing before um the village board for action. And uh as a, after um hearing uh. The um, from the building department, you could then authorize uh. The village to take action and actually remedy the problem and take the uh billing, the, the cost of. Of remedying the problem and put it on the uh owner's tax bill um to be uh, you know, paid through his taxes. Um and uh we would get recouped that way. So that is a law that's on the books. Um I do not want to um prejudice this particular individual's rights in any way. We, I can tell you that um. He was noticed to be there tonight. I, I don't think he is here or any representative of his is here. Um but I'll let uh Brian Murphy now speak to that and he can explain to you uh what he did, what he observed and why we're here.
So uh do we need to open a public hearing at this time?
Make a motion for a public hearing, he's gotta be sworn in.
I'll make a motion that we open a public hearing.
Second.
Seconded by trustee Huber. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And uh should I let Brian speak first and then um ask if there's anybody to respond?
Yeah, Brian, just raise your right hand for the record and just, you know, do you prom, you uh affirm the promise to tell the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth under penalty of perjury?
I do.
Okay, so I know this is not an official like court proceeding, but um you know, if uh. I, I, I want the record to reflect that you were, you know, that you did um. Actually make these statements under penalty of perjury because you would have had to sign a complaint to that effect anyway if we were going through the court system. So why don't you just explain to the board uh as to what is going on in this particular area?
Okay, um you, you, we received numerous complaints over the years of uh this specific property. Have not had much luck with getting any compliance, like uh. Attorney Wallace said, we, we had taken the gentleman to court, um the trial won, got the fines. But nothing was taking care of the property. We, we, you know, we, we got the fines, but it still doesn't clean up the property. And it's only found works here. And now with the new law in place, chapter 114, you know, we, we're, we're here now and uh we're able to uh go into the property and uh. Cut the grass, cut down all the obnoxious roads, the sumac, this, you know, there, there are a lot of uh undergrowth, uh obnoxious growth.
Brian can't hear you, Brian.
Can you hear me now?
Way better.
Okay, I'm having a hard time. My audio is, is, is not working very well either. Um but they're just, you know, the, the property is way over. But they're just, you know, the the property is way overgrown, uh they're poison sumac, poison ivy, you know, poison. Everything, you name it, it's growing there. Um, and the uh the owner is not doing anything about it at all. This this, so the uh notice you are looking at is the first one. There's also a second one that would send registered mail. And we turned the feedback to uh, you know, giving him the second opportunity to be here. And to uh clean up his property and nothing is happening, you know, I think it's time for the village board to. You know, authorize either the highway department or whatever landscaper we choose to go in and clean it up. So the neighbors don't have to uh look at it any further.
Can you just explain to to the board this first notice of violation? What is it for? And do you have any pictures to show the board at the condition of the property as it exists today?
Um, I do. Um, it I I can't read that. If it could be made bigger. I'm not sure if that's the high grass or the uh.
This is the um high grass, obnoxious growth.
Okay, so it's chapter one fourteen six, I think F.
F, yeah.
One two two seven F, one of the one. Um, there is the the backyard is just growing wild. Um, the the front yard, you you can't see the house. Um, the side yard, you can't see the cars that are seen into the driveway. Way overgrown.
Would you like me to read it? The the notice of?
Mayor, why don't you read it and then why don't you bring the board to the pictures and so he can he can testify as to what he observed?
Mayor, do you have the pictures or no?
No, I don't.
Okay.
Yeah, I.
Pictures are in your packet, by the way, that was given to everybody.
Oh, okay, I have the pictures then, I do have. So I'll read this and then we'll uh, so this just says, please take notice that the code enforcement officer. Of the village of Wappingers Falls determined that the overgrown weeds and obnoxious growth throughout the entire property violates. One fourteen six F of the village code on July tenth twenty twenty and August twelfth twenty twenty. The enforcement official issued a notice of violation and orders to remedy, which directed that the weeds and or grass should be cut. And violation existing on your property be cured on or before August twenty second twenty twenty. In accordance with chapter one fourteen of the village code, the enforcement official filed written reports with the village. Noting that he has inspected the property and found that the overgrown weeds and noxious growth throughout the entire property. Was not in compliance with the property maintenance requirements of one fourteen. At its August twenty sixth meeting, the village considered the rep. Considered the reports of the enforcement official and any evidence presented at the meeting and pursuant to the provisions of chapter one fourteen. Of the code duly adopted a resolution, which we will show in a minute, that determined that the overgrowth of weeds. And noxious overgrowth throughout the entire property was not in compliance with the property maintenance requirements of one fourteen. And I will uh. Share the other.
The affidavits of service on the uh property owner should be also attached to the papers.
I'm gonna share this, but it's it can't be. Okay, here's the photos that uh were part of this. I I don't see a way to change my orientation here.
You you can right click. And rotate clockwise.
Good, okay, thank you.
Now we go one picture by picture. Actually, this is the next code violation, so let's get back to this one.
And 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 it does have uh, that that's a different property right there.
Can you right click and then?
I'm gonna do the, is these the right properties though?
No, that's a different property. That's the next one.
I don't have any other pictures in this.
You have them, if you go go back to the garage, Mayor.
Alright, well, actually, why don't we stop here? You could testify at least, Brian, as to, you know, the growth.
You could see th- that that's a garage back there that has no roof. Well, basically no roof on it. Um, but tha- that's just a small clip of the the overgrowth. That uh is on the entire property right there, you know, um, that's a picture from the neighbor's yard. Shooting into the 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 dress there. Pretty, pretty evident that uh. You know, there there's a massive lack of maintenance.
Is that same picture?
A little different angle.
Okay, can you keep scrolling down?
Are those are the only two pictures I have?
Yeah.
Right, Brian?
They are, Mayor, if can you can you go into your email? I just forwarded you an email. I apologize, I had it set up for some reason, my. My my regular computer, the audio is not working, so I'm on the small laptop and I can't get to. My regular uh stuff, so um I did just forward you a an email with uh with more pictures.
Alright, while we wait for that, um, Brian, would you would you um? Would you say that the can this take those pictures represent a fair and accurate representation? Or a fair and accurate representation of how the property looks today?
Absolutely.
And the when was the last time you were uh at that property?
We were by on, I believe, Friday.
Okay, and when you say we, the were you there?
Yes, I was, yes.
Did you observe any change in the condition of the property?
No.
Aside, you know, that that could change from those pictures.
Yeah, anyway, it's getting worse.
Okay, and uh you you were like that you um served them with two orders to remedy?
Correct.
And did you prepare an affidavit of mailing?
Yes.
Okay, and and you have that affidavit of mailing?
Um, I believe you do, I'm pretty sure.
Alright, I see it's not in this package, but I think that, you know, I would provide it to the village clerk so he could at least show. The the village trustees that jurisdiction was obtained and we could have this hearing today. Alright. So call for you to just give that to the village clerk. And um. At this point in time, what do you, what is your opinion as to um uh village action? What is your recommendation as to village?
I have some questions whenever we get a second.
Okay, before you ask that question, trustee Davis, that was the picture, that that's.
Those those are those are even more recent pic.
Could we see that again, please?
Yeah, so I'm so, okay, so when you send them like this, I have to sh- share, then stop share and then go get a different picture, so.
Okay.
You wanna go back to the original picture?
Yeah. Okay, what does that picture represent?
The backyard of twenty five South Remsen Avenue.
And who does twenty five South Remsen Avenue belong to?
Uh, the record dedicating Mr. John Tuchet.
Okay, and have you spoken to him?
I have not.
Has he reached out to you?
He has not.
Has he attempted to reach out to you, to your knowledge, or your office?
No.
Okay, and when did you, when when were these pictures taken?
They were taken August twelfth.
Of twenty twenty?
Yes.
And is that where they taken by you?
No, they were taken by my deputy.
Okay, and is that a fair and accurate representation of how the property looks today?
Yes.
Okay, what is that a pro- uh picture of?
That is a picture of the garage at twenty five South Remsen Avenue.
Is that a fair and accurate representation of how the property looks today?
Yes.
What is this a picture of?
That is a picture of the rear of the property at twenty five South Remsen Avenue. That's the garage in the left-hand side.
And uh was that taken on August twelfth twenty twenty as well?
Yes, correct.
And is that a fair and accurate representation of how the property looks today?
Yes.
Your knowledge hasn't changed?
No. May it got worse.
Are there any other pictures? Alright, you can skip this. I think this is a repeat.
Yeah, the it, you know, you can only get pictures of the rear of this yard from one side of the property.
Alright.
Can't see down the driveway side. You you can't see looking west from South Remsen. Because there's numerous unregistered vehicles and sumac, you you just can't see through the yard, you know, you don't know.
Also fences, correct?
There are, but they're only four, you know, they're 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 not very, they're not really blocking line of sight from the front yard. It's the overgrowth of sumac trees and unregistered vehicles and whatever else is hiding behind it, you can't you can't.
Okay, before the the board contemplates action, um are there any questions from the board?
I have some. So. I guess, just go back, I have a series of questions, but go back and give us the history, Brian, if you would. Um, what, what, uh, let's go back to the meeting, the board meeting where we were approached by the residents in the village. We took action after that. What exactly did we do?
You know, I'm 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 not sure which one, which meeting you're talking about, trustee Davis, I I'm I'm sorry, so. When this was a- a- after chapter one fourteen was adopted and became law by village board. We had to take a little time to get used to it and then, you know, we issued the original uh violation notice. Which I I believe was dated for last meeting or maybe two board meetings ago. And it was adjourned till this meeting, that that's.
Okay, okay.
You know, um, we we spoke with neighbors and, you know, take pictures and we're just trying to get everything in order. Because it's a new law and a new procedure.
Right, so as as of today, you have two, you've written two violations?
Correct, yes, we we've written two vi- one violation was for overgrowth and one violation was was for an unsafe structure. And those were done twice.
Okay, and and so. And we've got no response from the homeowner.
Correct.
Right, and you're gonna, so you you're gonna recommend tonight that the board take action? And that we have the, there may be a possibility that we send our personnel in there to clean it up, right?
Correct.
Okay, so um what other violations are there?
Uh, there 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 appear to be numerous unregistered vehicles. Um, but we can't get clear pictures or anything of them w- without actually stepping on the property, which we can't do. Um. You know, and I I just, I don't know what's in the backyard until we clean it up. I I I don't.
So this has not gone before the court, right?
No, not these, not these specific charges. He was in front of the court. Two years or so ago, um, for unregistered vehicle, for 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 parking in his front lawn and and other. Tickets, I I don't know them off the top of my head.
Well, and and what was it, well, how was that educated? What happened?
Trial and um and we won and and he was issued fines.
Are the same vehicles there?
Yes, couple of them are, yes, it appears.
Okay, so it appears it's the same vehicle, so in order to do that, we would have had to ascertain the information on the vehicle, right?
Correct.
So if it's the same vehicle and he wasn't. He was fined and then he didn't follow the orders of the court and have the cars towed out of there or removed. Then he's in violation of the same, the sa- there the statute of limitations on those fines? I mean, on those tickets?
No, I mean, they're they're, they have to be reduced to judgments in order to uh act as liens on his property. So Judge Chase did find him. Um, I don't recall if those judge, uh those fines were um.
Doesn't?
Reduced to judgments, so I can't.
Doesn't he give him, doesn't he give him a certain amount of time to get their vehicles removed once he does, once he he rules on that?
No, there has to be um more charges brought and that's precisely why the new law was passed. Because you can cite somebody under the old law so many times. We would have had to bring an action in Supreme Court uh to to get a little more teeth into it.
So so what we're gonna do then, it what we're gonna do then, based on the decision of the board tonight, we're gonna go in. And we're gonna bring our public work folks in there and they're gonna clean it up. And then the second that they're done cutting the last tree down, because it looks like it's a jungle in there. Then we're gonna, we're gonna get the information on the vehicles and we're gonna write, we're gonna, we're gonna write the violations for the vehicles as well. Do we know how many, approximately how many vehicles there are?
I I believe five.
Okay, so that.
But you can't see the backyard, there could be more, yeah, there there's definitely two in the front yard that that you can see. And I believe there are three to four more in the rear yard.
So those are gonna be, those are gonna be. Five vehicles, there's gonna be an order to remedy for, we're gonna write each individual's car separately, right? Each vehicle separately, right?
We don't have, well, I I I will discuss that, I guess, with village, with the village attorney. I believe we can have them in one, but. We, you know, we'll we'll.
We 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 just were, we're, this, the hearing is really for the for the present offenses that are.
We're, yeah, so we're gonna, we're gonna, okay, but still, the present offenses, if we've determined that that there's been violations on on vehicles already. And it turns out that that's the same vehicle and they were, they've, they disregarded the orders of the courts to have the vehicles removed. And pay the fine. Um, are there additional charges that we can make?
Yeah, there are conceivably additional charges, but right now you're just being asked to um make a determination. As to whether or not this property is in non-compliance under the general maintenance code uh section one fourteen for the overgrowth. Um, and then.
Also, if we go in there and we cut the overgrowth out, there's a also a potential that we're gonna find other violations, right?
Possibility. A lot of things.
I I mean, it's just gonna, it's gonna be an overwhelm overwhelming fine, it's gonna go on as taxes, it's gonna get paid off by the county. And we're okay, but that's a, that's a lot, that's the fine, the fines are gonna be overwhelming, I I.
Well, I mean, you know, uh Brian Murphy has the discretion to bring tickets every single day. And every continuous violation thereafter is a thousand dollars a day, up to a thousand.
And it's just ridiculous that it's just not gonna, the homeowner's not gonna go take care of this problem. So very unfortunate. Alright, that's all I got.
I I have a question. Um, it has, has the homeowner has could just completely disregarded, no responses, whatever to any of this stuff?
Correct. Nothing, we we've heard nothing.
Wow. Wow.
We have served him to, you know, return to the the post office like we're supposed to. Um, I I I personally posted the first notice on his door.
Correct.
Actually, on his car, I should say on his car, because you can't get to his door. When um they they were said certified, they were said regular. And the first one was was put on his. and the first one was was put on his property perfectly. Absolutely nothing.
Okay.
Alright, well.
Okay, so are you gonna look for, are you gonna look for a motion for us now to have to hire the Public Works Department going and clean up the property?
There's a resolution before.
We'll have to end the public hearing, but we have to end the public hearing, but that's what we're gonna do.
Well, that that would, we would have to end the public hearing with respect to this particular charge and reopen it as to the next charge.
Oh, so we'll have a separate public hearing for the next charge?
Yeah, well, here's the thing, we're not recommending action at this point in time with respect to demolition, only because we, actually, Brian, why don't you, you know, just let the board know what, what your thoughts are on that.
You know, for for the the second violation, if they were seeking, the pictures of the garage roof are pretty clear from a distance. So I I'm not comfortable with asking the Village Board yet to move ahead with demolishing this garage until we were able to get onto the property, clean it up and take a better look, and if I need so, I would reach out to the village engineer before we demolish anything and ask for a report to be issued from them. That's why we're not moving ahead with that.
In addition, we want to also assess the cost of demolition as well so that we can bring that information before the board possibly for future action. We're hoping that that, you know, any action tonight might light a fire under him and and get him to take some action on his property.
It's ridiculous to me, I mean, you're gonna, you're at the point now where you're gonna, you know, if you you got these two violations, you got, we're gonna talk about the garage, we're gonna talk about the cars, we're gonna talk about the number of times that we could write tickets. I mean, the court, the it'd be huge, huge.
Yeah, absolutely. Under the new law, I understand we're into the the public hearing for the one, but under the new law, I believe, once we get a process in place, we would be able to legally go in and remove these vehicles, but since this law is bad news, we don't have a process yet to actually go in and physically remove them, we don't.
What, what can we do, Brian, so that we can not, I mean, because this thing's going on forever, I think everybody wants to put a clause on it. It's gonna go to the courts, he's gonna be levying fines, there's potential other matters that we can find him for. What, what can we do now? What can the board do to make make it, the process a lot more easy?
For for this one specifically, the board could approve going in to clean it up so we can see what's going on. Going into the future, we we need to get a process where we could use this law to go in and remove unregistered vehicles for private property. So we could get rid of that violation. Those are really the two. Generally, this one garage is not the normal, you know, you have other garages that are in bad.
I think everybody's under the same opinion as me and anybody could feel free to speak up here, but I think we want this this thing done. Alright, I'm tired of this Remsen Avenue property being an issue. So I I think everybody else has, we've talked about it for years, we've created legislation to get it done. Now, now it's time to do something and get it done. So if we gotta work out a procedure for cars, then I don't, I don't know if that legislation we just passed covered that or not, but we gotta, we gotta figure out what we're doing here and do it.
Yeah.
We can't, can't let it linger on for forever.
The the legislation that was just passed has the process built into it for me to get, for my office to individual in front of the board, how we are now. With this, with this specific one, where I'm asking that we mow the lawn and cut the trees, that we have the ability to do. We we don't have the ability to tow vehicles and store them, so we we need to come up with a process of who is going to do that.
I don't even know if we can constitutionally take somebody's property from them and remove it from their, from their real property and store it, because that could be, you know, that could be an unconstitutional act.
That's, that's a decision of the, by the court, once they're, once they're cited and in violation, for being in violation, right?
Well, we all, you have to act within the confines of the law that.
Yeah, but we have, we have.
I don't think that our law even calls for that, so.
Yeah, but we have laws in the books right now that you can't have an unregistered vehicle on your property.
Yes, but it it, the right of of a municipality to go on somebody's private property and remove property is is trumped by that individual's private property rights.
Commissioner Burke, I'd like to hear your your view on this, because I'm sure you've dealt with it before. You got any suggestions for us here?
Well, what Craig says is kind of true, we really, it's like, any property on somebody's thing, we can't just go in and take it without a search warrant. So I see a vehicle as the same thing, just because it's unregistered. It might be a violation that the village thinks, but I don't think it could be removed from the property.
What do they do in other municipalities that you've worked?
Never seen too many vehicles unregistered in persons' driveways.
Yeah, I that, I I gotta agree with with Commissioner Burke on that, but I can tell you that in the other municipalities where there's a law like this on the books, you know, when you start like ticketing people and getting judgments of a thousand dollars at a clip, it it starts to get noticed. So when you're, I can, I can tell you that this particular property is mortgage-free. So if he really wants to see his equity in his property eaten up by all these municipal fines, I think that maybe, you know, you're, we'll see some action.
Well, I I surely hope so. If he doesn't, if the if the homeowner doesn't doesn't pay their fines or or the homeowner is, let's put it this way, if the homeowner's getting tagged with a potential of, let's just use even, even fifty dollars or or twenty-five dollars fine for their car, they're still at like a hundred and, there were four cars that were a hundred and twenty-five bucks there for the written two or three times, plus the, plus the garage, plus us going in and cleaning it up, plus that being put on their tax burden, that's thousands, that's thousands of dollars. And and I just don't understand why this property owner does not contact us and and work out something that works for everybody.
May I, may I interject something here?
Yeah, one other last thing, Brian, if I may, this, Brian, this is directed at you. Didn't, didn't this homeowner make the comment that they would rather go to jail and clean it up?
Absolutely, in front of the judge. At trial.
That's just ridiculous.
Well, this, Trustee Davis, this is what I, and I'm gonna ask Mr. Wallace about this. If you take a look at those pictures, anybody who's living in those conditions like that, ju- just judging by the response to all of the documents that has been given, it's it's kind of like not really caring. You know, I I'm just throwing that out there, you know, so you've been served notice, you're not, I think there's some other issues going on there that, you know, just, I'm just throwing it out there.
Yeah, well.
How we deal with that?
That's not for us to talk about in the public forum, no.
Yeah, yeah, I, yeah, yeah.
Well, yeah, but also for safety, for safety wise, we're gonna send our crew here to clean it up, but God only knows what's living in the garage with no roof on it.
Well, that's kind of what I'm getting.
Here's the thing, if there are violations that Brian Murphy observes, he has a right to to bring an administrative search warrant. And, you know, we're prepared to do that, you know, on any property where where you know, this, this law hearings are of a last resort, you know, they're, they're and we're at a last resort for this particular.
Well, I say, my, my suggestion is to start, let's, let's, let's create the situation that our public, public works people go in and clean it up and let's get ready to start writing as many tickets that we have to based on the violations you see once the land's the, once the vegetation's cleared out, just, just write it all up, because it's, it's crazy. There's, there's, they've got, they've got word from your department, Brian, already, they know what the circumstances are. They've been in violation and they've been in front of the courts before, because of the cars before, they know what's sitting on their plate. So just, I would just prepare to start, start writing every violation that you find, it's enough to know this property. And then if the homeowner's making comments, the homeowner's making comments that, you know, that they're, they'll go to jail first, then then so be it. I I just think it's ridiculous.
Yeah, well, before we close the public hearing with respect to this charge, you know, I just wanted to ask, Brian, do you have any recommendations to the board? You know, as in your capacity as a code enforcement officer as to any action?
I I recommend we go in and start trying to clean it up, you know, with, with, cut the poison sumac, you know, cut, cut all the obnoxious overgrowth so we can see what's going on. I mean, I I don't wanna clear cut this guy's property and cut down all his decent trees, but it's you can't see, I mean, you know.
What is your recommendation that refer for now as to the detached garage structure?
My, my recommendation for the detached garage right now is that we we wait a little bit, so we can get closer to it and see what's going on with it.
Okay, and gather more information on demolition costs and come back with the board. So basically, we'd ask the board to table that particular allegation for now until we get more information and can come before the board with, you know, an opinion possibly from the village engineer, because it involves a structure. And Mayor, if, if it's the board's pleasure to close the public hearing at this point in time, I'd ask you to read the resolution, which is in the form of motion.
I actually have something real quick. Brian, did, um, did he allow you on his property to take those pictures? Or did you have to take those pictures from somewhere else?
They're from somewhere else, we weren't, we weren't on his property.
Um, because I just have concern of sending our employees onto his property to cut down whatever we're gonna cut, trim. I feel like this will be a safety matter when we do try to approach his property.
I agree with you.
John Cardge, Village Clerk, I can just tell you from historical memory, we use contractors before for this kind of activity, not our highway guys.
I would have to agree with you right there, John.
We have other things to do and the contractor will give you a price, he has a burden rate, he'll be able to give you a real accurate cost of what it would be. Only my recommendation based on what we've done in the past.
Well, let's get a price on that and we will keep the highway department in back burner. I mean, they cleaned up the lawn on, down on just stairs.
Do you want to substitute private contractor for highway department in the resolution then?
Don't we say?
Possibility of.
Say employees or contractors?
It does say that, yes.
It does, right?
Yes.
Okay, good.
Yeah, you have that built in.
So then, then, you know, you have discretion at that point in time.
I I I agree, I I just, I don't know how a contractor is going to be able to give a price. Might as, I think you need to win there hourly, because you can't see what you have to do.
It's, it's a debatable item, we can, we can discuss, we can debate it later, but it's written the way it's written, let's just move on.
Okay, I I, I think, you know, we can take the matter of police concern up, up at the time that, you know, the contractor has to go onto the property, I mean, it's legitimate.
Well, then, you know, then we do, we take, we take another course, right? Right, Commissioner Burke? I mean, that's.
We'll assist whatever, whatever you need down there.
There you go, there's your answer.
Alright, everything's gotta be peaceable. Alright. Alright, so at this point in time, there's a motion to close the public hearing?
Could we get a motion to close?
I'll make it.
So Trust, Trustee Panassa made a motion to close, could I get a second?
Second.
Second for Trustee Davis, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, do you want to do the other public hearing first and then vote on both things?
Well, I think it was determined that we're, well, actually, is it, is it the board's pleasure to table that particular matter for now, until we find out more information, as recommended by Brian Murphy?
Wait. Regarding the cleanup of the property or the?
Detached garage structure.
Okay, I thought we were gonna open up and talk about the detached garage.
No, we're, we're, the recommendation is to table that and and for another meeting.
Okay.
Another public.
I got you.
May I ask, would they be able to just keep the public hearing open or you're gonna?
Yeah, that's, that's what we'll do after the action is taken on this particular charge. You'll open up the public hearing and adjourn it, so that way you don't have to.
Okay.
Alright. So the public, the motion is, is with respect to the public hearing on the brush and grass and overgrowth only. So Mayor, was there action taken? I don't even know, John.
No, we didn't take, we talked about, we didn't take.
So if if there's a motion, you know, that passes to close the public hearing with respect to that one charge only, then I'd ask the, your mayor to read the resolution with respect to the overgrowth into the record. Okay, that's, that's it right there.
Okay, this is the right one, right?
Yeah.
Okay, uh, so I would like to get a motion on the following resolution that states, whereas John Teshet is the last known owner of real property shown on the tax.
You have to close the public hearing before.
Oh, could, I thought we did that. Could we get a motion to close the public hearing?
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
Didn't we do that?
No, we talked about it.
Seconded.
No, we did it, it's done. The motion was by Trustee Panassa, seconded by Trustee Davis.
To close the public hearing?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, so I'm, now I'm looking for a motion to pass the following resolution and a second, and so the resolution states, whereas John Teshet is the last known owner of real property shown on the tax records and the tax map of the village's tax parcel ID six one five eight one eight four oh nine one four eight, having a street address of twenty-five South Remsen, and there is no record of a mortgage, whereas the village has received numerous complaints that the property has become overgrown with grass and weeds and that it was unsightly. And whereas on June twelfth and August twelfth, both of twenty twenty respectively, an enforcement official observed the existence of overgrown weeds and noxious growth throughout the entire property, which violates one fourteen six F. And therefore, after issued notices of violation and orders to remedy dated July tenth twenty twenty and August twelfth twenty twenty respectively, copies of which are affixed here too, which informed any person in control of the property that they had an opportunity to appear and be heard at this meeting of the village board to offer proof that the property is in compliance with the standards of chapter one fourteen of the village code, or that additional time is needed to take corrective action to cure the violation. And whereas an enforcement official of the village of Wapinjers Falls filed written reports with the village board that the village noting, of the village of Wapinjers Falls noting that he had inspected the property and found overgrown weeds and noxious growth existed throughout the entire property and that the property was not in compliance with property maintenance requirements of chapter one fourteen. And whereas a public hearing was held on August twenty-sixth twenty twenty and all parties in attendance were permitted an opportunity to speak regarding the maintenance conditions of the property. And let's say to let the record show that. Say to let the record show that, um. That. No one from this property, uh. Came to the meeting or appeared online or made arrangements otherwise to speak at this meeting. Whereas the village board of the village of Wapinners Falls after due deliberation finds that the overgrowth of weeds and noxious growth. That exists throughout. The entire property is not in compliance with the property maintenance requirements of one fourteen. That such condition has continued after the orders to remedy was duly issued and it is determined that abatement of the overgrown weeds and noxious growth. Is now required. And then if this, uh, motion is made and passes, it would be resolved that the village. Directs that the enforcement official dispatch the highway department or contractors. To the property to remove the overgrown weeds and obnoxious, and noxious growth throughout the entire property as soon as possible. And it would be further resolved that in the event that the highway department is unable to remove the weeds and noxious undergrowth that exists. Throughout the property, the enforcement official is authorized to engage the services of a landscape contractor to undertake such work. As expeditiously as possible, which is not subject to competitive bidding and. Be it further, it would be further resolved that accurate records of the labor and materials costs required to perform the abatement. Shall be kept so that they can be assessed and levied against the property. And it would be further resolved, a notice stating the total amount due and the nature of the charge shall be mailed by the village treasurer to the last known. Address of the person whose name appears on the records in the office of the village treasurer as being the owner. Agent or as the person designated by the owner to receive tax bills or where no name appears to the property address to either the owner or. Or of agent. Such notice shall have stamped or printed thereon a reference to. Section one fourteen six F of the village code, the property owner shall have ten days after a copy of the notice. Establishing the costs and expenses is received to challenge any of the costs incurred by the village. And be it further resolved that after expiration of the time period to challenge the determination of costs and expenses, the amounts thereof. Shall be reported to the village treasurer to be levied and assessed against the property. And the expense shall constitute a lien and charge on the property on which it is levied until paid or otherwise satisfied or discharged. And otherwise be collected in the same manner and at the same time as other village charges. And it would be further resolved that the village clerk is directed to mail the annexed a border. Order of abatement, a copy of which is annexed here too, within two days here of. Here of to the property owner at the address shown on said order. So could I have a motion?
I'll make it.
Seconded by trustee Davis, roll call vote, trustee Huber.
Aye.
Trustee Marka John is absent.
Correct.
Trustee Kamornik is absent, trustee Panessa.
Aye.
Trustee Davis.
Aye.
Trustee Lammers.
Aye.
And I will vote aye as well. Okay, um.
All right, so now that that particular charge is, is passed us. Um, can I have a motion to open the public hearing with respect to the, uh, detached garage?
Did I have a motion?
I'll make it.
Okay.
That was Scott.
Yeah.
Okay, second.
I'll second.
I couldn't buy trustee Huber.
All right.
Or Lammers. Is that Lammers?
I believe so.
Okay, second by trustee Lammers, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Uh, before I forget, Brian, you're gonna have to make sure that the affidavit is a service. On both, um, orders to remedy on both dates are filed with, um, with the village clerk, okay? Uh, all right, so with respect to the second charge, this is the detached garage. Um, you heard, uh, testimony earlier from, from Brian Murphy that it's his recommendation that we, um. Actually, uh, tabled this particular, um, charge. Uh, so that we can gather more information and come before the board because it involves a permanent structure. And, um, we may need to get the village engineer involved in determining whether or not it's a, um. It's an imminent threat to the occupant or to the public. So why don't we at least open the public hearing, which we did, okay? And then Brian, can you just? At least for jurisdictional purposes, um, mayor, can you put the allegation, the charge, the order to remedy? Before the board so that they can see and familiarize themselves with it and then, you know, we. And the action can be taken to adjourn the public hearing. Now, the order to remedy is, yeah. Okay, what is this? This is.
This is overgrowth. Okay, this is, here's the structure. Right, Brian?
You know, there, there's no picture on the screen, you know?
Oh, I think we were gonna first look at the order to remedy. And I'll show you the.
Yeah.
That's it.
That's it. That, that's the second notice that went along with the second notice for the grass, correct?
All right, and how was Mr. Tuchet, uh, served?
To, uh, certified return receipt mail.
Okay, and, um, you have the mailings?
We do.
Okay, so please, um, file those with village clerk forthwith.
I believe they have them already.
Okay, well, I want, he, he has to receive them as well from your office. I have them, but you're gonna need them. So what is your recommendation with respect to this particular violation?
My, my recommendation is that the public hearing is kept open so we can further investigate the condition of. The detached garage. Um, I wrote the violation with, with clear pictures of the roof. To where it, it, you know, it's in bad shape, but when we. Go on to the property to clean up the overgrowth, at that time, I would like to take a, a, a better look at it and see. What, what's going on with it?
Do you have any, does the board have any other questions?
No.
Okay, so then board should entertain a motion to adjourn the public hearing with respect to this particular charge. Um, yeah, do you, uh, have a date, Brian, in mind, September nine or September twenty three?
Um, September.
Mayor, what's your preference on that?
I, I think we should do September ninth and then we could adjourn it again if it's not.
Okay.
Right?
Yeah, I agree because the, the, uh, village election is when the sixteenth.
Fifteenth.
Fifteenth, I'm sorry.
Okay, yeah, the, uh, September nine will, uh, be okay. Well, you know, I, I, I just need to be able to get. A contractor in there to clean it up so we can take a look at it, um.
Yeah, well, subject to availability, I mean, it may not have any action by then. So if need be, we may have to adjourn it again.
Okay.
I'd ask the, though, the village clerk to notify him of, of the next adjourn date of, for the public hearing on that charge.
All right.
Okay, so, um, could we get a motion to adjourn this public hearing until September ninth?
I'll make it.
Seconded by trustee Lammers, motion made by trustee Panessa, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Motion passes.
So we have one other thing in here, uh, Brian, are we doing this tonight? This notice, this second notice, this third notice of violation?
I, I, I would like to be able to open the public hearing. It hasn't been. There has not been a resolution written for it yet, um, so I'm not sure. I would ask village attorney if we can open the public hearing. And.
Well, I, I have, do you have affidavits of service?
We do.
Okay, and was that the individual notice to appear tonight?
They received the, uh, oh, they received the violation notices, yes, and called her off.
You just put the, um, the, the, uh, Tribuco violation up. Eight Tribuco Place. Who's the owner of record?
This is Norris Durand at eight Tribuco Place with the mailing address of twenty five Hornbeck Ridge. Poughkeepsie, New York.
And that was noticed, as you can see, for a hearing tonight at five o'clock PM. Have you heard from, um, and, uh, Brian? The owner?
Um, we have, um, and. I, I had expected her to be on this evening, but she's not.
Do you have pictures of, all right, so why don't we open the public hearing and adjourn it to September nine? Is that something you'd like to do? You recommend to the board?
I, I, I recommend that, yes, because we, we, we don't have a, a resolution yet. This, this has not gone to you. You know, we, we don't have the resolution to move forward, um, so I, I, yeah, I recommend that we, uh. Open the public hearing and adjourn it, but there are pictures and I would like, you know, if there are questions, I would like to answer them also, you know, just, you know.
Okay, is there a motion to, to open the public hearing?
We get a motion?
Yeah, you know, the actions bringing in front of the board.
Brian, let me just get the motion to open the public hearing first. So who's, who made the motion? Who did?
Kevin.
Have, so trustee Huber made a motion, second?
I'll make it.
Second was made by trustee Panessa, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, all right, Brian, go ahead.
Okay, so what I was, you know, um. All, all these actions that were, were, well, the two actions that we're bringing to get, you know, to, to the village board this evening are all coming from neigh- neighbor, numerous. Neighbor complaints, um, this property has been another one that ha- has had numerous, uh. Violations, um, time and time again, and they would do a little bit of cleaning. It, it, it's not occupied. It is vacant. And it's been vacant for, for a lo- for quite a long time. Um, I don't know exactly how many years, but quite a few. That right there is a pile of two by twelve lumber to. I don't know what to do. She, she tells me one day it was going to be in addition, then the next day was delivered to the wrong property and she's building a house somewhere else, but. Um, you can see the condition of the backyard right there and. To, to, to her, that, that is satisfactory to this homeowner. That, that's what she thinks this. Prop, that that is okay. And per our code, that's not okay, in my opinion. And that's all I have. That's all I have.
Well, can you just explain what he, what that picture is right there?
From, that is, we are standing in her driveway, looking north to, behind that is. Vets Field, the clubhouse and the barn, which obviously you cannot see through that, that's. Um, poison or poison sumac to your left, poison ivy to your right. Uh, pricker bushes intertwined, and I'm not sure of the species of the tree in front of you. Um, you're look, looking at a, an accumulation of, uh, twigs and branches and combustibles in front of you. Um, a ripped, shattered, a tattered tarp, not shattered, tattered tarp, um. And just, you know, a, a, obnoxious growth and overgrown property, you know, there is a little bit of grass back there. You just can't see it.
When was this picture taken?
That was taken on the tenth of August.
And have you had a recent opportunity to view the property?
I have, yes.
And is that a fair and accurate representation of how the property appears today?
Yes.
Okay, what's the next picture? I don't know what that is, so it could be construction.
It is, the, those are two by twelves. That, that's two stacks of two by twelves. Um, covered in a, in a ripped tarp that extend the length of the driveway. I, it, it's two very large. Piles of, of construction debris that has been there for years.
To your knowledge, is there an open building permit with respect to this house for any?
There, 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 there is not an open building permit.
And is that a fair and accurate representation of how the property looks today?
Yes, it is.
One more picture, okay. What is that picture of?
That's the same picture standing in the backyard. That was the previous picture.
So is that the same property?
This is the same. This is right here. The, the, this picture is the other side of the, the property, um, the east side. And you're looking north, again, straight ahead would be, uh, Vets Field, um, and. The, and I have not even sent you yet for that, but the, the stairwell, the stairs to that door have collapsed. They're gone altogether. Um, you can see the new two by twelve. They started to try to rectify a previous violation notice. That we had written, but that's as far as they have gotten. And again, you could barely get around that house from the, you know, the, uh. The, the, the sumac, the, the, the poison ivy, the prickers and numerous other, uh, issues.
And in your capacity as building inspector, is that a violation of any, uh, New York State Building Code?
It is, and, and she's been cited.
And is that a dangerous condition in your estimation?
It is.
If, if somebody walked off of that platform, where would they go?
Wait a minute.
Um, into that hole right there.
Is that concrete?
It is.
Are they concrete stairs leading?
They are not. They were wooden stairs that rotted away.
Oh, okay.
And what you're looking at to the left is a new two by twelve. They were going to put new stringers for stairs, but that's as far as. You know, that's as far as they got, right? But the, those violations are not in part of one, chapter one fourteen. We, we, we handle those differently.
Are there any questions from the board?
No, so, well, what, what, what's your, what's your attempt for progress for this, Brian? What are you gonna do?
Well, for, for the, for, for, for writing this one and putting her in, in front of the village board. Um, I, I, I am hoping that she realizes that if, if it's not done, that the village of Wapinners Falls. Village Board will, you know, act and, and we will clean up the property as it, as pertains to. You know, obnoxious growth, overgrowth and, uh, and, and, uh, you know, tall grass.
So essentially what you're saying is, is we just, we're gonna give her enough time to, 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 to take action and if not, we're gonna, we're gonna. Start writing citations.
Well, well, yes, we could write citations and we could, and, and the village board could also pass a resolution. To direct either a contractor or the highway department to go on and clean the property. We're, we're not looking to go on. And rebuild her set of stairs. That, that's, that's a completely separate issue. But I am looking to go on to help the neighbors to have all the poison ivy, prickers and all the, uh. You know, again, the, uh, the overgrowth, the undergrowth and poison sumac and I, poison ivy all removed from her property. That, that, that's what we're looking to do.
Brian, to your knowledge, is there a pending foreclosure action?
I do not believe so.
All right, so what is your recommendation or action of, of the board tonight?
My, my recommendation is that we adjourn this public hearing and she has given a notice from the village board. To appear at the next. Village Board meeting.
Uh, before you do that, have you, had you commented on this, this picture?
That is just showing the address. I'm sorry. That, that, that was just for identification purposes.
So you understand that you were previously put under oath and you're still under oath, right, Brian?
Yes, sir.
Okay, and, and your recommendation is to continue the public hearing?
Yes.
All right, so we, there would be a motion to adjourn the public hearing and a motion to adjourn the hearing to a date that's convenient to the board.
Could we have a motion to adjourn this public hearing till September ninth?
I'll make it.
Second. Seconded by trustee Penessa. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay.
Aye.
Okay, um, so I'm gonna move on to the zoning board. Is that, is there anything left for this, uh, these two zoning hearings?
No.
Okay, so, um, the next item on the agenda is we would first like to thank, uh, Ms. Rachel DeGratia for her service to the village of Wapingers Falls by serving on the zoning board of appeals. Rachel and Mike are moving, uh, west and they, um, have, uh, made a great home here, many friends, and we appreciate their service. Uh, so we would like to wish them well and thank Rachel for her service. So John, would you please prepare a letter on behalf of the board acknowledging, uh, her service to the village of Wapingers Falls, thanking her and telling her that we will miss her. Um, and then, uh, we'd also like to.
Great people.
Pass, uh, I'd like to ask if I could get a motion to appoint Ms. Loretta Holloway to fill the vacancy for the remainder of Rachel DeGratia's term on the zoning board?
I'll make a motion.
Uh, second it.
So, uh, Loretta has been serving as an alternate for many years and, uh, we appreciate her service and where, uh, she was also recommended by, uh, the chairman of the zoning board as well as, um, got, um, other recommendations as well. So, all those in favor?
Who ma- who made the motion? I didn't get that.
I believe Brian made the mo- so Brian Lammers made the motion and trustee Davis seconded the motion.
That's correct.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, and, uh, Brian, do you want to talk to us about the resignation for Robert Walner? Brian Murphy, did he go off?
No, he's still on.
Hey, I'm sorry, my mouse wasn't working. Um, yeah, un- unfortunately, uh, we had received the resignation of, of Robert. Um, yeah. Was, was offered a full-time position as a code enforcement officer, um, in another municipality and, uh, I, I, he, he had asked me about it and, uh, and that's it. You, you can't blame him. He, he's leaving for a full-time position in another municipality. Had to see him go.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, so, uh, we will also, uh, ask that we prepare a, uh, thank you letter to Robert for his service and, uh, could I get a motion to accept the written resignation of Robert Walner?
I'll make it, Mayor.
I'll second it.
Seconded by trustee Davis. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay.
You know, I gotta comment on this one. Uh, since he was, I mean, he did a lot of work for the village and he's helping Brian out. Uh, is there any way we can put an ad in the paper to? If we can fill this position again?
We actually already did. We repeated the same ad that we had had, uh, before.
Okay, great.
Yeah, I mean, can, can I make one come? The, the paper might be a good place to put it also. Where, where, wherever we can put it and the quickness that we can fill this position, it, it's very, very needed. It, it's very needed. Um, we, we have scheduled out, knowing he was resigning, you know, we, we have scheduled out for a month and a half of fire inspections and rental registries and things like that to where, you know, it, I, I'm not going to be in the office much and, and not going to be able to do a lot of other things unless we get somebody else to, uh.
I think we could, I think we can put it in the paper and indeed, and then you're able to also post it on a website for zoning. Brian?
Uh, what? Oh, on.
Pardon me?
On, on our website?
Don't you, no, isn't there a, um?
I could forward it to, to the associate, the Newsbox Association.
Okay, so, so we'll do those three methods. Is that?
Yeah.
And we'll also post it on our website. Okay, um, so, uh, that, that we did receive, uh, we did receive a comment uh, on our website and it is a comment. It's a comment from a resident who lives on Hillside and they, uh, request that we, uh, would not turn the water tower area into a park, um, and, uh, I'll, I'll get you the actual comment. So it's the, the, um, comment is from Marie Magna at Four Hillside. Subject is the possibility of a playground where the water tower is. I have heard about the possibility of putting playground on Hillside Avenue where Water Tower is located. I have had a discussion with my neighbors and we are against this idea. We are senior citizens and we all feel we don't need someone's children running around here. We enjoy the quiet and privacy. This will also attract undesirables, which I witnessed years ago. There used to be activity after dark. We have teens now that hang out up there. We are all in agreement that we don't want this park. This could also bring cars that will be taking up parking on the street. It's not a good idea. Okay, um, and I have safety on the agenda. John, did you want to say something about safety?
Uh, no, uh, Mayor, I, I put that on the agenda every, every time, just in case there's something that comes up, uh, with the police or anything else relative to safety.
Okay. And, um, is there anything else that the board has?
Yes, I have something if, that's all right. I, something came to my attention. I just wanted to know what the status was and see if what we're, what we're allowing to be done and not allowing to be done. And that's regarding the, um, on, um, the electrical line, the, the power source that, uh, uh, Patsy's Pizza is using from their building to the tent. I guess there's, there's been some controversy over it. Um, I, I think there's an easy remedy for it and I just wanted to throw it out there. I don't think that cutting power off or not allowing them to do something when there's a remedy, I, but my suggestion is, is that they uh, encase the, uh, the line in, in a, in the length of pipe and put, uh, item, put, uh, um, uh, blacktop over it and, until their season's over. I mean, I don't, I don't know any reason why we would prohibit them from running electric across there when, you know, it's, it's, it's not, I mean, the traffic isn't an issue because there's, there's not that many cars that go down there. And, um, it, it would remedy the subject temporarily until it's a problem. I don't know why anybody would complain about it, but they have. I think there's an easy remedy and I think that's the remedy they should use. Trustee Dave is what? I'm sorry, go ahead, Ken.
I would disagree with that because that, that is the village right away. That is the village road and no village resident can dig across the road, put anything in a road without village permission. I'd rather see him call Central Hudson and have him drop a line in and meter to that lot and put a pole up or whatever may be, may be there.
Yeah.
Only because I, I just don't think we should be digging in the village right away.
I'm not saying, I'm not saying to dig. I'm saying just lay the pipe over and put, put, uh, put item on top of it or put, uh, um, coal patch over it until, until they can get a line dropped. If, if they can get a line put across there from Central Hudson, that's fine, but temporarily until then, just put a piece of pipe and some coal patch on it.
Well, I could tell you one thing. Can I just interject one thing, though? This is like, uh, actually a pending investigation that probably should be discussed in, in-house in the executive session, so, you know, you guys are gonna be, uh, we're gonna be journeying anyway to go in there, so I, I think that maybe it's not appropriate to talk about at this particular point in time, because Brian's gonna actually join us real quick for that can ex- and can, uh, tell you what he, uh, knows as far as the, the update.
All right, but I, I got you, but it's seasonal. It's a, a six to eight week process. I, I really don't see what the big deal is here.
Okay, so why don't we, uh, go into executive? Were there any other items before we do that?
I don't have anything.
Uh, Commissioner Burke, do you have anything that you wanted to bring up?
No, nothing at this time.
Okay, I would just, uh, tell you that, uh, the commissioner and myself met about, uh, his, um, work, uh, involved with Duchess County. Duchess County has been inviting myself and the commissioner to, and as well as, uh, I think, uh, we've also gotten, uh, our lieutenant involved in the county's effort for, along with the state's effort for police reform. So there has, there have been, uh, some laws passed at the state level having to do with police reform, uh, the, uh, setting up of a committee and the reviewing of policies. Uh, I'd just like to say that our commissioner's done a great job reviewing, uh, what the state and the county have been done. The county has done a great job in putting together, um, assistance for all Duchess County municipalities and, uh, making it available to all of us and getting the information out. So, uh, thank you to Walter for all the good work you're doing as far as that goes. Okay.
I have just one thing, Mayor.
Okay.
I attended a webinar today with your conference of mayors with respect to the upcoming election on September fifteenth. If anyone out there has any questions about it, feel free to call me at any time at the village hall. Uh, we spent a lot of time on absentee ballots, in the ballots, preparing the polling place and all of that. And I will be totally in charge of that election that day. So any questions at all, please direct them to me. Thank you. Maybe you can answer. Tony Wallace, you wanna?
I'm sorry, I, I was just gonna comment, uh, along the lines that, uh, John Cars just said, the, um, the legislature actually came out this week with new legislation on, uh, absentee voting. So to make it much easier for those who, uh, don't want to venture out and, you know, into public would rather vote from the privacy of their own home, they can do so. So, um, I, those questions can be answered by our village clerk because they're, and caps, they're in a, uh, in the, in the paperwork that, uh, the village would be giving them for the, uh, absent, with the absentee ballots. Is that correct, John?
Yes, that's absolutely correct. COVID nineteen is a reason why you can fill out an absentee ballot and get it to make. I have another question, if I may.
We also put that on the, on the website, that information.
Yes. Trustee Scott. Um, this is pointed at John Cards. John, on a normal, uh, New York village law says that, uh, the term for a trustee, uh, leaving office is midnight the night before the reorg. What's, what's it gonna be for this because of the COVID situation for, uh, trustee, uh, Kamornik and I? I don't know exactly, but I was told the day after the election. But I'll firm that up. Yeah, the, uh, New York.
John, that, um, the, the oath of office has to be executed by the, um, you know, winning candidate. So I would, I would venture to say that, you know, as soon as you're, uh, the candidate has executed that oath of office, I think it's.
Yeah, I read the, I read the code. Uh, I read the, uh, uh, New York State law regarding villages and it's, it's, they said it's midnight before the reorganizational meeting. So I, I don't know if that holds true for this situation. I don't even know what the, do we know what the, uh, reorg meeting would be even?
I went, venture to say that we, without any other direction from the state, we should have our reorg meeting on September twenty-third. Uh, oh, I'm sorry, September thirtieth.
September thirtieth, yeah.
Yeah, so that's the last, uh, Wednesday in September.
That would be September twenty-nine at midnight.
Any not, any, anyway, John, maybe you can get some clarification. I will. That'll come, that'll come down from the government's off, governor's office anyway, so.
So if there is no, uh, official New York State guidance on that, then the, uh, what, I, let's advertise the reorg, John, as being, uh, Wednesday, September thirtieth.
And, and, and one other thing on that note, just as you know, I'm a protocol freak, um, trustees, Lammer, um, Catalano, she left one right, writes her out of the election and whoever wins the second ward, um, they need to have ample opportunity to pick the committees. So that information should be sent to them immediately after, you know, right after the election.
As I remember, John Cars has always, um, ceremoniously, uh, performed the oath, uh, at the reorg meeting, so, um, that would bring us to September thirtieth, right, John?
Yeah, the reason that I say that is because there's gonna, if we're still COVID, if it's still COVID, a COVID situation, we're not gonna have time to, to analyze the committees and everything else. So I think you take a little extra, you know, preparation and make sure that people know, you know, what the committee situation is. Anyway, that's it for me. Sorry.
Okay, so, uh, could I have a motion to go into executive with our attorney and, uh, our code enforcement officer? Brian Murphy?
And Commissioner Burke.
And Commissioner Burke?
I'll make it.
This is for the purpose of discussing a pending investigation.
I'll make the motion.
Second?
I'll second.
Seconded by trustee Lammers. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Thanks, everybody.
Thank you.